Okay, I think that's gonna fix it. Yes. Yes. Okay. You know, it's been a crazy year, so I just figured we need to make our life a little easier. Okay, y'all get out your study guide. We are gonna go over that as soon as I can get this all rolling. I'm gonna let y'all ask questions first and start with the ones that are the most important, and then we can kinda go from there. Because I know some of them are super easy and you probably don't need my help on, and then some of them you're gonna need more help. Okay. Don't forget, if for whatever reason something happens and you get quarantined, between now and the day that you take your test, you will be taking your test online. If you're in class, you're taking a paper test. So there's two different versions of the test, one for the virtual, one for the in-class students. If you are at home, you do have to zoom in. Okay, so you will be zooming with your cellphone. Have your Zoom set up. You'll prop your phone up so that I can see you taking your exam and I can see your computer. And I'll send out the code for that. If for whatever reason that's you and you are stuck at home, we will work that out. Now, if something happens and like you can't be here on the day you take your test, you can still take your test on the makeup day. Okay? So that Thursday is the makeup day. So you can definitely do that there. If you're quarantined, obviously you can't come, but if you're virtual, like if you guys are watching this and you're virtual and you would like to come up to the school and take your test, you can do so from 1 to 3. 1, I guess 1, 1:30 to 3. So just email me and let me know if you want to do that. Okay. Hey, Emma, I didn't even mark you as it. Whoops. Okay. Where do we wanna start, y'all? Somebody shout out a number. Number 9. Okay. This number 9 is a system of equations, but it's got the inequalities. Okay, so you're shading. Remember that if it's greater than or greater than or equal to, you shade above the line. If it's less than or less than or equal to, you shade below. Now, yours is gonna be multiple choice, so you're just looking for the correct graph. So when I take multiple choice tests that have the inequalities, the first thing that I'm gonna look for is solid lines versus dashed lines, because that will help you eliminate some choices. So anything that's equal to, if it has the equal to underneath it, it's gonna be a solid line. If it doesn't have the equal to, then it's gonna be a dashed line. So those are the type of lines. So look at that first. That way you can decide like, that's an option, that's not an option. For this one, since both of these are equal to, then we need solid lines for both of them. But your test may have one solid line, one dashed line, or two dashed lines. So look at that first. Make sure you've got the ones that have the right lines, and then you can go from there. Now, what's easy about this one is that they're already solved for y. So that's gonna save you a little bit of a headache, because if it's not solved for y, that's the first thing you have to do. But yours on your test will be just like this, okay? Just won't be these equations. So that makes, that's clear to everybody, right? Like number 9 on your test will be like this. Good morning, thank you. So the first thing I need to do for this first equation is plot my y-intercept, which is at negative 1. Okay? The slope is also negative 1. So when I do rise over run, I'm going down 1, right 1. So down 1, right 1, down 1, right 1. Okay, you could flip it, you could keep going the other direction if you want. And then, remember, yours is gonna be multiple choice. So you're not actually gonna have to graph these out. You're just picking the correct graph. So this one is the line for this. Your symbol says greater than, so I'm just gonna lightly shade above. So that's that one. Now, for the second equation, that y-intercept is at positive 3. Okay, the slope of that one is negative 5. So I have to go down 5, right 1. So I'm going down 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right 1. Okay, so they overlap at that point, but you're not looking for a point, you're looking for shading, the overlapped shading. But I am gonna connect that using a solid line. And this one again is greater than. Okay, so if you're not sure which way is greater than, put your pen or pencil on top of the line and go to the top of your paper. So this would be the top of my paper. So that means I need to shade this direction. So this area here, because this would be shaded too, actually. But this is your solution, where they overlap. And so that would be the graph that you're looking for. Next. Number 10. Okay? Number 10 is your absolute value graph. Remember that absolute value is the V graph, okay? So it's gonna be two straight lines, just like that. The parent function, we graphed that every time we graph these. The parent function is at the origin, 0, 0 at the vertex, and then you can go from there. With this one, okay, it's been shifted. That's what we talked about when we talked about absolute value, like what way it shifts. So y equals a x minus h plus k. So it's just like all the other shifts that we've been doing. Remember, if a is negative, it flips your graph upside down. It also stretches your graph. Okay? H is the one that is going to be your horizontal shift, but it's opposite than it appears. And k is your vertical shift. And it does what it says it's gonna do. If it says plus, it goes up. If it says minus, it goes down. So looking at this situation, we have y equals x plus 2 minus 1. Okay? X plus 2. What does that mean? What direction are we gonna be going? Left, because it's opposite than it appears. It's plus 2, which would make you think positive, but it's actually gonna be left 2. And what does the minus 1 tell us? Down 1. So if you can do that, you can pick the right graph. Because again, yours is multiple choice. You're picking the right graph. It initially was at the origin. That's where it started. But you're going left 2, 1, 2, and down 1. As long as you can identify that vertex, then you can pick your correct graph. This one does have a a, that's just 1. There's not a number there, so the a is just 1, which means it just goes up 1 each way. And then you can draw your b. But again, as long as you can identify your vertex and the shift, you'll be fine. So the black dot was the original, at the origin originally. 2 to the left, down 1. And that's how you get yours. So just being able to identify that vertex is gonna give you your answer. Okay? Next. 14. Okay, 14 is our solve by graphing, and you have to do the slip and slide method, okay? Did you guys do okay on 12? Let's do 12, too. Okay? So with this one, you have to multiply across. That's the slip part, slip and slide. So you bring down b squared plus 4b minus 60, plus 5 times negative 12 is negative 60. Okay? Then, remember, you're looking for the factors of c, which in this case is negative 60, that give you a sum of b. So your factors would be like 1 and 60, 2 and 30, 3 and 20, 4 and 15, 5 and what? 12, 6 and 10, 7, 8, 9, that's it. Okay? So which of those is gonna give you a sum of 4? It's gotta be 6 and 10. Who needs to be negative? Good, because you want the 4 to be positive, so you want the smaller number to be negative. Negative 6 plus 10 is positive 4. So then you take those and you say b minus 6, b plus 10. The difference with this is we're not done, because we gotta finish the slip and slide. We did this over here. Now we have to bring down the 5. And when you bring down that 5, remember you divide each of the numbers by 5. Emma, you paying attention? Liar. So 6 divided by 5 does not simplify, so how do I rewrite that? That's right, you do 5b minus 6. And then 10 divided by 5 is what? That's 2. And that is your answer. That's the slip and slide method. If that was too fast and you need more practice, you can YouTube factoring using slip. Is that slip and slide? Or factoring the fast way. Either of those will give you what you're looking for, okay? And you can, I'm gonna record this. This is being recorded, so you could go back and watch it again at home. But this is what you could look up on YouTube to be able to watch some teachers going through some more factoring. We did a lot of practice on Delta Math with factoring, too. So there's things that you can do to help factor. But look, factoring 100% is gonna be on your ACT. It's on there. So you've got to be able to remember that. Okay, so now let's look at number 14. So 14 is gonna be the same thing. We have to factor using slip and slide. So I'm multiplying 2 times 20. 2 times 20 is 40. Now, I'm not worried about the 0 right now. The first thing I have to do is factor. Okay, so now I need the factors of 40 that give me a sum of 13. So 1 times 40, 2 times 20, 3, 4 times 10, 5 times 8. There it is. 5 times 8. Thank you. So 5 times 8 is gonna be the factor that you are looking for. Thank you. So you've got x plus 5, x plus 8. They're both positive this time, so that's fine. Now, we still have to slide down the 2. Now, does 5 divide evenly into 2? No, so how do we rewrite that? 2x plus 5, and then what's 8 divided by 2? Now, that's factored, so I'm gonna set it equal to 0. How do I get the answers? Set each one equal to 0. 2x plus 5 equals 0. x plus 4 equals 0. Subtract 5. 2x equals negative 5 divided by 2. So x equals negative 5 halves. And then over here, subtract 4. x equals negative 4. What's another way we could've done that besides factoring altogether? Quadratic formula. And to be totally honest with you, I'm not gonna know whether or not you actually factor or use the quadratic formula. It's, I don't care, okay? Even though the instructions are gonna say solve by factoring, like if you decide to, if you decide to use the quadratic formula, that's totally fine. The only reason that I would like even look at your scratch work is if I think you cheated. So just don't cheat, and you'll be fine, just like with the ACT. Okay, so you can solve by factoring. And actually, another like test-taking tip, I probably shouldn't be teaching you these things, but like if your answer is x equals 2, x equals 4, you totally could take those 2 answers and substitute them in to see if it works. Okay? If you take that 2 and plug it in, and it doesn't give you 0, then a is not your answer. Does that make sense? So using substitution would work as well. You, they both have to work. Yes, they both have to check. Yeah. And like, I know that seems like not the right thing to do, like because it gives you instructions, but on the ACT, like who cares? You're just trying to get the right answer, right? Like, that's what I'm trying to prepare you for. I'm trying to teach you to take the ACT. So that's not a bad method. I mean, it works. It's gonna give you the answer, okay? But make sure you check both. They have to both work. Just because 2 works doesn't necessarily mean that 4 is gonna work, because the ACT will totally trick you. So check both of those. Okay? What else? 16? Let me text Miss Springer real quick. Okay, number 15. 15 down here, same thing with plugging in, but I don't think it's gonna be that easy with those, because these are gonna be like radicals. So you are gonna need to be able to know how to do this one, but this one's actually super easy. You are simply just isolating k. So just like Algebra I, when you're solving for a variable, that's exactly what you're doing. You can't do that. Exactly what you're doing right, right here. We're just trying to get k by itself. So what's the first thing that we need to get rid of? Good, so instead of subtracting 2, we're adding 2. 7k squared equals 63. Then what should we do? Divide by 7. k squared equals 9? Then how do we get rid of the square? Good. k equals a square root of 9. What's the square root of 9? Or, that's right, 3 or negative 3. And I think your test, I think it lists them out. I think it says k equals 3, comma, k equals negative 3. So you wanna have both of those. Okay, and then, did somebody say 16? Or was it 15? Okay, what else?
19.
19? Oh yeah. Okay, 19 is definitely gonna be one of the harder ones on the test. And there's no trick for these, like plugging in to get an answer. Like you have to multiply. So if you remember multiplying matrix, you're doing a 2 by 2, because it's got 2 rows, 2 columns, by a 2 by 3, which, if you remember, if the middle dimensions match, which they do, then your answer will be the outer dimensions. So our answer is going to be a 2 by 3. So I like to sketch that out like that, so that I have an idea of who I need to multiply. Because for this first one, that is row 1, column 1. It's in row 1, column 1. So I have to multiply row 1 by column 1. Okay? So 5 times negative 2 is negative 10. Negative 3 times negative 6 is positive 18. So you multiply those 2 things together and then add. Negative 10 plus 18 is 8. 8 goes right there. Now, test-taking tip. You do that, there's only 2 that have 8 in that first spot. Well, you can eliminate the other 2. So now you're down to a 50/50 chance of getting that correct. Do one more, and I bet you you're done. Okay? So, because they're not all going to be the same. Or if you look at your answer choices, and like B and C are what's left, and B and C have 8 here, they both have the same number here, but they have a different number in that column, do that column. Okay? This location here is in row 1, column 3. So you multiply row 1 by column 3. 5 times negative 5 is negative 25. Negative 3 times negative 6 is 18. You add them together. What's negative 25 plus 18? Negative 7. And so then you know who your answer is. Okay? So you don't necessarily have to do every single spot on a multiple-choice test, but you've gotta be able to do enough to make sure you're getting the correct answer. If you wanted to do the whole thing, just to be sure, just make sure you're multiplying the row by the column. Okay, if I want this spot down here, I need row 2, column 2. So then you multiply row 2 by column 2. Negative 1 times 5 is negative 5. 1 times 2 is 2. Then you add them together. Negative 5 plus 2 is negative 3. Make sense? But again, just do enough to make sure you get the right answer, and then you're good to go. Yes? Go ahead. Um, I do have the answers. I don't have them all worked out. But yeah, I can give you the answers. And then like, tomorrow, I'm gonna give you the option to zoom in with me, and you could ask more questions tomorrow. Yes? Yeah, 21. Okay, 21 is basically an algebra problem, but it's, it's just got a lot of other things involved. So like, if you look at what's going on right here, you are looking for this minus some other matrix. A represents a matrix to give you this. Okay? Well, what you can do is work backwards, just like it's a regular old equation. Because if you did negative 1 minus x equals negative 9. If I just look at this spot and this spot. Okay? What would you do to solve this problem? Yeah, you do. Algebra I. Add 1. Okay, so then you bring down negative x equals, what's that gonna be? Negative 8? And then you divide by negative 1. So x equals positive 8. So that's how you would solve that basic Algebra I, okay? Well, you do the exact same thing, okay? What we're gonna do is we're gonna add, well, no, no, no. Um, I'm gonna subtract it. Because, okay, look. This, yes, the whole matrix. Because if you look at this whole matrix, there's not a negative sign in front of that whole matrix. So I'm subtracting the whole matrix, just like that. Okay? Coming over here, subtracting the whole matrix. So we're still working this equation now. Okay, and the reason I subtract it is because even though it's a negative a, this matrix does not have a minus sign in front of it. Okay, it's just got a nothing. So we gotta subtract it. So then you subtract negative 9 minus negative 1. Negative 9 minus negative 1 is the same thing as plus. So that's going to be negative 8. Okay? Negative 8? I just don't have enough space. Well, I'll try. Okay? Then you do negative 1 minus 2. Negative 1 minus 2. That's gonna give me negative 3. And you can use a calculator. Like if that's, like if you're like, I hate negatives, just use a calculator. Okay? Then you have 16 minus 10. 16 minus 10 is positive 6. So that is what you have right now. But remember, a up here has that minus sign in front of it. How do we get rid of that minus sign? Divide by negative 1, multiply by negative 1. Either way, it's gonna switch all of those signs. So this is gonna become a positive 8, a positive 3, and a negative 6. So your answer is a equals positive 8, positive 3, negative 6. But again, if you did it just like this, like without doing all of the matrix, if you just picked a one single spot and then got your answer to be 8, you probably are gonna find your right answer, because only one of your answer choices will probably have an 8. So many tricks to multiple choice tests. Multiple choice tests are the best. Yes? Wait, say that again? Okay, because, and I guess, let me just try to make this a little bit better. If we write negative a equals, because when we subtract out this right here, I'll just need a piece of paper. There's just too much, there's just too much. Okay. So the first thing we did was subtract that out, right? Okay? So then we've got negative a equals. When we did our subtraction, what did we get? Negative 8, negative 3, positive 6. Okay? So we did our subtraction, we got to this point, right? Then, we cannot leave that with a negative a. So you just divide everything by negative 1 on both sides. That leaves you with a positive a over there, and then each of those is gonna change signs. By negative? Uh, that's just the same thing. That's just negative 1, positive 2, and 10. I just subtracted them because it's positive. You're gonna have to subtract them every time. What else? Okay, what other, what other questions? 29. Okay, 29 is the inverse. I knew y'all would forget about that. Okay, the inverse, remember, the first thing you have to do is replace that g of x with just a regular old y. Because in order to get the inverse of an equation, you switch the x and the y. Okay? So after I've replaced that g of x with a y, now I'm gonna swap them out, and I'm gonna have x equals negative 3y minus 3 divided by 5. So I've got them swapped out. Then, you simply isolate y. You gotta get y by itself. So how do I get rid of the 5 on the bottom? Multiply both sides by 5. So that's gonna be 5x equals negative 3y minus 3. What's next? Add 3 to both sides. That's gonna give me 5x plus 3 equals negative 3y. Do add everything by negative 3. So that's gonna be negative 5 over 3x. What's 3 divided by negative 3? Negative 1. Negative one equals Y. And then the very last thing is to replace Y with the fancy name. What's the fancy name of this equation gonna be? And remember, the inverse is G negative one of X. So that's your fancy name equals negative five thirds X minus one. What else? Twenty-eight. Okay, that's the composition. Okay? So with like twenty-six and twenty-seven, you just do each one individually, okay? And then you multiply the result, or you divide the result. So like for this one, you just take that three and you plug three into the top, and you plug three into the bottom. So you'll get those two answers. Whatever you get with those two answers, you multiply them together. Okay? The difference with this one is it's a composition. So you only plug in five into G. So you go to G and you plug in five. Two times five plus five. Two times five is ten. Ten plus five is fifteen. Now fifteen is what you're gonna plug into F. So you take that first answer, whatever you get, and you plug that into the other equation. Two times fifteen minus one. What's two times fifteen? Thirty minus one is twenty-nine. That is your answer. Twenty-nine is the answer. That's a composition. Yes, ma'am? Thirty-five? Sure. Thirty-five says, solve the quadratic equation with the quadratic formula. Okay, remember the song. The quadratic formula is negative B plus or minus the square root, whoops, the square root of B squared minus four AC all over two A. Okay, so that's your quadratic formula. Okay? The first thing that you have to do before you can even deal with a quadratic formula is make it equal to zero. Has to be equal to zero, which this one's not. So I'm gonna add two M. So that's five M squared plus two M minus thirty-nine equals zero. Because remember, you've got your AX squared plus BX plus C. So it's gotta be in that order. First step, put it in standard form. Are we okay with that? Then you identify your A, your B, and your C. A is five. What's B? And what's C? And then you just plug it in. Quadratic formula, negative B, so negative two, plus or minus the square root of B squared, which what's two squared? Minus four times A times C all over two times A, which is five. The first thing that I'm gonna type into my calculator is what's underneath the radical. Not including the radical, just what's underneath the radical. So four minus four, open parentheses, five, open parentheses, negative thirty-nine. That gives me the square root of seven hundred and eighty-four. Which, to be totally honest with you, I'm not sure if that's a perfect square or not. I don't think it is, but I'm gonna check. It is! Sure is a perfect square. See, I don't know everything. So negative two plus or minus, not the square root, well, you could put the square root of seven hundred and eighty-four divided by ten. Okay? Then, we just found out that that is a perfect square. Gives you twenty-eight divided by ten. Now what? That's right. Negative two plus twenty-eight divided by ten. Negative two minus twenty-eight divided by ten. And that's gonna be twenty-six over ten, which definitely will simplify to thirteen over five. And then this one's gonna be negative thirty over ten, which that one simplifies just to be negative three. So those are your two answers. What else? Okay, I don't have y'all's key printed right now, but let me just show you geometries so I can show you what it's gonna look like. Like this is the key that they have, that the test does. So it's just gonna be answers like this. This is obviously not yours. It's just geometries. But it will look like this and just give you the answers. So, um, you can check yours, okay? And you can get with me and ask me questions. Um, and then, here's my question for you guys. Here's your options. Do you want me to create a whole new study guide for you just to practice again and have extra problems to practice? Or do you want to Zoom tomorrow? Or none of those, or all of those? Doesn't matter to me. I just don't wanna make another one if nobody wants it. You would like to use it? Okay, okay, then I'll make an extra study guide for you to practice with. It's really not that hard. No, it's because I'm using, the, the reason why it's two parts is because I used the Algebra One test maker to make part one, and then Algebra Two to make part two. So it still will be two parts. It will literally be just like this. But I'll put it on Canvas and give you guys some different problems. Do you, would anybody want to Zoom tomorrow from nine to ten? No? Okay, that's fine. That does not, it does not hurt my feelings. I just was giving you that option. If you don't wanna speak up and you're like, I really do wanna Zoom with you, then just shoot me an email so that we can discuss studying tomorrow. But that's what I'll put on Canvas. So I will go to Canvas. I will put the key from yesterday, or from this study guide. And then I will put a new study guide with the key. So you'll have the key to both of those. If you have questions that you can't figure out, you can always email me. What day do y'all take your test? Tuesday. You're right, it's Tuesday. So you'll have until Tuesday to make sure you're ready. But don't wait. Try to study and be prepared. So you may have any more questions on this study guide? Monday is second and fourth. And remember, you guys, you have to come check in with me every day. I'm the one doing your attendance. So come check in with me every day so I can make sure you're here. If you don't come, you're marked absent. So it would be an absence, but just depends on how many absences you have if you're wanting to take those. Yeah? They, you can either get your parents to like, write a note to say that you can check out, um, or that you go in the auditorium, and you'll just sit and wait. Any other questions for me? Okey-dokey. Anybody on here, virtual people? Y'all have, oh, there's nobody on here.